Called the regular Board of Education meeting for June to order.
Please rise. What we gonna say in the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Keenley makes the motion.
Second.
Mr. Quinn seconds. Show of hands in favor. Six oh. Citizens' participation in statements.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had no one request participation per policy BDDH.
Written communications?
We did have written communication, which are posted in your, in your agenda there. That's all of the written communications that's been sent to the district.
Number five, citizens' update. Mr. Burwell?
Yes, Mr. President. First off, just a reminder, Fourth of July, need not remind folks, but Fort Leonard Wood will host Fourth of July. The installation we opened starts off with an eight o'clock run in the morning, the 5K color run. And the actual ceremony on game and field will start at three o'clock and then has a band, Smallpools will be the band about eight o'clock and then it finishes with fireworks around nine thirty. Also, just a reminder that ticket sales for the Old Dominion concert have started. People who are interested in going to that Old Dominion concert, it's the twentieth of July, they can either go by the travel, leisure travel office or LeonardWoodArmyMWR.com and buy the tickets online. And if I could at this time, I'd like to ask Josh to come up. This is impromptu, so, but I would like to say that on behalf of Fort Leonard Wood, you know, Josh has been very instrumental at Fort Leonard Wood over his ten years here, roughly ten. And really, I mean, you don't know how much, you'll never know how much athletic directors on that, I think some of you do know. But he's done everything from opening ceremonies to Fort Leonard Wood. He's engaged his coaches to do clinics for our kids up there. He's brought golf, he's brought cross country. As a matter of fact, he's even sat on panels to help us select people that work in my director of MWR. And he's also one of his initiative, I'm glad we're able to see through his starting swimming team. So on behalf of the command and leadership of Fort Leonard Wood, God bless you and thank you for everything you do for us all.
Thank you.
What time is that run?
Eight o'clock in the morning. You're, you're gonna do it?
No, he's my stunt double. He does all that for me.
There's many cookies as he's eating.
Actually, I checked and Mrs. Sumter is going to take my spot in the, in the 5K run.
You know, you've been ducking-
She's gonna run from her house through the course and back. Piece of cake for her.
You've been ducking us every month on the run.
Well, I pulled something.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Vacation? District announcement. Dr. Henry?
Thank you, Mr. President. We currently have two thousand three hundred and eighty-four students attending summer school, which is more than forty percent of our regular school population. New student enrollment for all new students to the district will be held July twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth at all schools in the district. Returning Waynesville R six students will automatically be re-enrolled in a Waynesville R six school. Summer sports camps are continuing. For a list of summer camps, please go to the athletics website under important info and forums. All middle school and high school athletes need physicals in both Mercy Clinic and Waynesville Medical Plaza will be offering free physicals. Detailed information's also on the athletics website. As a reminder, most of our smaller schools will be closing during July, except for July twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth for new student registration. They'll be open on August first. The first day of school for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year will be Wednesday, August the fifteenth. It will not be a late start on Wednesday on that first day of school. I know all of our administrators and students in the, in the audience wanted to hear about the first day of school already. So, mark your calendars. We'll be holding a diversity fair for the varsity football game starting at six PM on Friday, September fourteenth at Tiger Stadium. Homecoming will be Friday, September the twenty-eighth.
Agenda, bid recommendations. Dr. Berger?
Yeah, I think they were fairly straightforward, though they will pick up through June, July and early, early into the fall. So they're a couple pages full.
Financials. Dr. Berger?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. June tenth, two thousand eighteen with MOSIP, thirty-nine million, seven hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars, nine cents. CDs, ten point five million. General account, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars, twenty-three cents. Payroll account, fifteen thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars, nine cents. Total funds, fifty million, five hundred and fifty-four thousand, twenty-seven dollars, forty-one cents.
Contracts and MOUs. Dr. Berger?
Entertain any question the board might have on them, but I think they were all pretty self-explanatory as well.
All right, I need approval of consent, agenda on the rest, D, E, F and G. Do I have a motion? Dr. Fulmer makes a motion. I have a second. Mr. Derry makes a second. All in favor? Six oh. Seven staff recognitions. Mrs. Bells?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my privilege tonight to get to recognize David Shutton as our June Transportation Department Employee of the Month. David has been a dress, a bus driver for us for seven years. He's also a member of our fueling team and helps check buses daily to ensure that they depart in the safest manner. He's an ideal employee who works very, very hard and never complains. He's dependable and rarely misses work. And drivers in the department say it's the little things that David does every day that are noticed and appreciated by everyone. And so that is why we are so happy to recognize him as Transportation Employee of the Month. Congratulations, David.
Hey, eight. Board recognition. Dr. Henry?
Well, though the board has been recognized in public, I did want to go ahead for our viewing audience and recognize our board for recently being recognized or receiving recognition through the Missouri School Boards Association for Outstanding Board of Education in the area of teaching, learning and assessment. I was fortunate to go with several of our board members up to Tantera and receive that award and we were among distinguished company in the state. And I, I do want to particularly mention the, the work that Dr. Fulmer did, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Schultz for organizing this process, as well as all of our board members for the commitment they place into the, providing the best opportunity and the best educational environment for our kids. So, thank you very much and just wanted that out there for our viewing audience.
Now, in all seriousness, though, we've all talked about, and I'll speak for everybody here, if it wasn't for our administrators, our teachers and all the kiddos out there, that was a mute point. So, we did it for you guys. So, thank you very much. Discussion items, spring sports report. Mr. Scott?
Thank you. Have my spring report for a tenth year for last school year, seventeen eighteen. If you go through, we have our GPAs up there for all of our teams. Sorry about the formatting, it kind of jumped on me a little bit. But we're still hovering right around that three point oh for all of our teams throughout the year. Exciting. That, that left picture is the picture we took before baseball senior night. That's our seniors from the baseball team. But our baseball team as a whole with the GPA was honored as an academic all-state team, which is exceptional. Those kids are really putting in a lot of work on the field and in the classroom. And, you know, we don't, you don't have a lot of those whenever you talk about an entire team being academic all-state, not just one or two individual student athletes. And a big part of that was the athletes we'll get to a little bit later. Going through for the spring, we had two hundred and forty-seven high school spring athletes, one hundred and eighty-three at the middle school level. Important to note, all one hundred and eighty-three of those were track. So with some of the course, some of the sport offerings we're gonna have later, I really think it's gonna help get more students involved in competition and activities. Academic all-conference, we had thirty-nine spring athletes honored through athletic awards, twenty-three all-conference, forty-three all-district, four all-region, one all-state nominee or athlete that we have here this evening. Something that we broke down a little bit more for this report, nationally, there is an epidemic of sports specialization. And if you talk to anyone, doctors, professional athletes, anyone, they tell you, they tell kids today, don't specialize. Play multiple sports. Make your body change. Make your body deal with it. There's also an academic benefit of it. Our, our two-sport athletes, not just varsity letterman, but any two-sport athlete, excuse me, we had a hundred and twelve and they had a three point one, three GPA. Our three-sport athletes, nine through twelve, we had fifteen and they had a three point three six. So it's right there. We're right along the national average. The more sports you play, the better situation you're gonna be in academically at the same time. This is, these are, we had five baseball players who were playing summer baseball or are off at college earn academic all-state teams this past spring baseball year. Our athletes were Devon Sterns, Ethan Gatzmeyer, Colin Crockett, Trey Simpson, and I believe Eric Kane was the fifth one, where we had five academic all-state athletes from our baseball team. Our lone athletic all-state team, he's here. Tracy, can you come on up? I'm excited to have Tracy join me tonight. Tracy Gates has been a three-year letterman for our varsity track team. He came out this year and, and wanted to get a little bit further than he, than he made it last year, worked really hard. He was our Ozark Conference Champion in both the long and the triple jump, three-time varsity letter for us. Coach Rawlings talks about just the, the attitude and the mentality of Tracy, that he just showed up, he was always relaxed, was never worried about anything, and they jumped in some pretty difficult conditions at sectionals. I mean, it rained, it was that, that time period where you have weeks of rain. People were slipping on boards, falling on their backs, you know, just treacherous situation where it's like, go out and run. Everybody has to deal with it and qualified for the state and ended up finishing fifth in the state. So, want to congratulate Tracy, get a picture of him for being an all-state track athlete. But Tracy's just another example of when you're a good kid and you do everything the right way and you show up and you have a good attitude, good things will follow at the same time. Going through, we'll, we'll hit our same goals. I'm gonna heavily focus on community involvement this year. Coach Turner and Coach Malbach, our new softball coach, reached out to Andy Cochran with Waynesville Youth Sports and they put on two clinics. We had twenty-three baseball youth coaches from the community show up. We had six softball coaches show up. They met at the baseball field. They discussed how we do things, why we do it, drills that they can use, fundamentals that they can stress on and they can, they can touch. So it was a great day. It's building that partnership with the youth coaches and the community with our high school coaches. Something exciting, the, the one awards, I found out about this last week, but Morgan Loggins was nominated and she ended up winning the one awards for softball. So she was voted on for our area as the best softball player in the area, which is without a doubt the easiest vote that they should have had. So Sean Sacks was also highlighted as a nominee. He didn't win again. I don't know how you go fifty-two and oh in class four and you beat everyone and win a state championship and you're not the best wrestler around, but that, I wasn't on the voting panel, so I wasn't able to solicit my opinion. This is a picture. We had several youth camps. Coach Haynes had a youth football camp early this summer. And I believe this week Tyler Eifert is out on Fort Leonard Wood. Tyler Eifert, he is a tight end for Cincinnati Bengals. He came out to Fort Leonard Wood, is putting on a clinic for, for kids. Coach Haynes called and said, hey, can I help? And he said, yes. So he's out there working that camp on Fort Leonard Wood with Tyler Eifert and a couple other of our coaches are out there also. We had seventy-seven youth basketball kids, third grade through sixth grade, come out for a, a clinic. And you should have seen Coach Matlock running the, the drill for left, right, on the floor, jump, rebound. I mean, it was, it was crazy. It was worth it to watch it and at the same time be excited that you weren't in charge of that. So our, we have, and both our, our boys, you know, Coach Pills, Coach Matlock were there. Several of our, our high school athletes were there helping with the camp. It was a really awesome camp the last week of school. And the MVP of the camp, as Coach Pills and Coach Matlock will say, was Coach Wilking, because we had all the middle school kids put on a bus and transported from their elementary schools to the high school. So seventy-seven elementary schools took them out of their routine for a week. Was pretty awesome. We had great cooperation with our, our pipe partners this year. Came out to several baseball games, several soccer games. This is just a picture of one of the groups that came out and I think they had a lot of fun too, whenever they came out. We finished our pursuit through Rotary. Every single one of our varsity teams made it to the Rotary Club, visited. Our kids did awesome. I mean, it's what we expect. You put them out in front of people, they're able to tell you the lessons, what they're learning, what they're doing and why sport is important. And our coaches did a nice job with them also. Just a picture, we're, we're active with TPT. We're getting kids in there that are lifting. I think Coach, Coach Ace will have stats later for attendance, but we're doing a good job getting kids in a room. Filling it up and kids are making gains and, and Coach Gramatis is doing a great job. We had, here's just a couple pictures. The next two have Tracy in there also. We had twenty-four of our athletes this year sign a letter of intent to play a sport at the next level. So we're excited for those, those athletes to get the chance to continue playing their game. This was neat. I'm not sure if you were able to make it or not, but just to bring, bring attention to something that happened. Springfield Demise, which is a soccer club in Springfield, they reached out to us. They held a, a game of the fourth division of US Soccer between the Springfield Demise and the Tulsa Athletic Team. It was a marathon because it was one of those lightning nights, so I don't think they, they got out of here until after midnight. But it's really, it was great. We hosted this game for them. We also hosted a game where a St. Louis team and a Springfield team met in the middle. Eric Sorley, who used to be with MSU, called us. They rented out the facility also to have a game. So that word is getting out there. People are seeing the facility, loving it and, and hopefully bringing more people to our facility to eat and stay in hotels. Our tennis team finished second in districts. That is, you know, went up against a, a great Central team. Central team only lost a couple matches. They ended up losing to Republic, or to, excuse me, Rockbridge. And Rockbridge had to go out of state to lose the two matches that they lost all year long. They beat everybody five zero or five one. They were unbelievable tennis factory. Postseason hosting, want to thank Mary Ann Ward. She's, for the last, however long Mary Ann's been here, she's been feeding us pictures for our website and getting great footage of our kids. These are pictures she took from district track. We had a great time. The weather was beautiful. The facility was awesome. Everybody loved what happened. This is Lacey Squires, who's our school pull vault record holder. She broke that this year. I believe going nine foot, six inches, which is huge. I'm currently no height at six foot still. And then these are just some other pictures that Mary Ann took highlighting what our kids are doing. And it's a great resource for the athletics department to have her sending these to us and getting these awesome pictures out for our kids. And last but not least, I told Coach Schultz that I would tell everybody goodbye for him. So that's Coach Schultz after twenty-three years coaching with us, getting ready to drive off into sunset. So, I appreciate it, appreciate the time and that concludes my report.
Well, thanks again, Mr. Scott. We're, we're gonna miss you and good luck in Springfield. Remember when you, as players, forfeit, throw in the towel, whatever you need to do. All right, end of the year achievement. Dr. Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, I'm going to present our end of year performance data. There is a lot of data here because it captures the whole year with the exception of our state performance data, which will not be in until later this fall. I'm gonna start with our district writing prompt. We use the district writing prompt across the grade levels four times per year. And we measure student progress in writing towards mastery of end of year writing standards. The writing prompt presents the students with unfamiliar text, which they then respond to, which is similar to what a, a person does in real life when they, they read something and have to make decisions about the message that whatever they're reading is trying to give them. And it's also similar to what they would see on a state assessment. This year, the writing prompts were all rewritten, so they were new this year. So, we will see some trend data over multiple years, but just know that this year they were all reworked to make sure that all of them were on the appropriate grade level, that all of the reading passages were at the appropriate grade level. Area one is question and this assesses a student's ability to develop an idea that addresses the topic of the prompt. In the area of question, sixty-nine point four percent of students were proficient as compared to forty-three point four percent at the end of first quarter when we gave prompt one. End of year performance in the area of question was one percent lower than when compared to the end of last year. Area two of the writing prompt is text evidence and this assesses a student's ability to, to respond to the prompt using specific and relevant text-based details. So they're reading the prompt. They read the passage, read the prompt and when they respond, they, they have to use evidence from the text. Sixty-eight point four percent of students were proficient in this area as compared to forty-one point eight percent at the beginning of the year on prompt one. And when we look at last year and our end of year score was actually the same as we were in May of two thousand seventeen. Conventions is area three and this really looks at those grade level conventions and students' ability to use those appropriately. District-wide, sixty-three point five percent of students were proficient on conventions, which was twenty-two percent higher than where they were at the end of prompt one. Conventions will continue to be an area of focus as we move into next year. And conventions did go down slightly when compared to last school year. And again, writing will be our K-12 focus as we really work to have a comprehensive writing program that's implemented consistently from year to year. At the high school, they moved from the quarterly writing prompt this year to a blended writing prompt, which they gave twice this year, which is more of a performance event. This is because the state changed the format of the writing prompt on the end of course exams. So they wanted to make sure students were, were practicing in a way that aligned to the EOC. So with the EOC, they are, students are given multiple documents. It could be a reading passage, a website, a newspaper article that they have to read. And then they're given a prompt and they have to respond using multiple types of responses. And they also have to cite the, the source documents in their response. And conventions is the strongest area when you get to the high school level as compared to that being the, the weaker area, K-eight. It is an area of strength for our high schoolers. Next, I'm moving into our local assessments. So we have our common assessments that we give throughout the school year. At the end of fourth quarter, students in pre-K through six had an overall proficiency on ELA standards of seventy-seven point five percent as compared to forty-one point eight percent at the end of first quarter. These are year-long standards, so we expect that proficiency to go up throughout the year. Our teachers use the data from our local assessments weekly during collaboration time to make instructional planning decisions and to adjust instruction and determine what students need additional intervention or enrichment. Overall, the percentage of students scoring proficient on common assessments is down slightly when compared to last school year. However, we did transition to new state standards this year, which meant that all of our assessment, assessments were rewritten and aligned to the new standards. When looking at math, at the end of fourth quarter, students in pre-K through six had an overall proficiency on math standards at eighty point three percent as compared to sixty-one point two percent at the end of first quarter. Where our ELA standards tend to spiral, tend to be more end of year standards, math is taught in smaller chunks. So sixty-one point two percent at the end of first quarter would be expected. And then we continue to watch throughout the year as additional standards are added. Overall, the percentage of students scoring proficient on common assessments is down slightly when compared to last school year. And as was noted with ELA, these are new standards and new assessments this school year. At the middle school level, standards proficiency for core content classes was seventy-one point six percent with ELA and social studies showing the highest levels of proficiency. And at the high school level, the overall standards proficiency was sixty-three point six percent for core classes. ELA eleven, geometry and government all exceeded eighty percent. Next, I will present end of year performance data on the STAR assessment. STAR assessments are nationally normed tests that assess literacy and math skills. Information from STAR assessments is used in conjunction with our local and state assessments to make instructional programming decisions. The STAR Early Literacy Assessment is utilized to assess early literacy skills of our kindergarten students. The percent of students meeting the expected benchmark increased for all buildings from the beginning of the year administration through the end of year. And East and Thayer showed the most scale score growth as well as the most growth in the percentage of students meeting the benchmark. The STAR reading test assesses students in the area of reading. All students in grades one through ten are assessed. The percentage of students meeting the benchmark at each grade level ranged from forty-nine to seventy-nine percent. The percentage of students meeting the benchmark district-wide was fairly flat when compared with May of two thousand seventeen. As a note, scores were renormed by Renaissance during last summer, which makes year-to-year comparisons a little difficult. But in grades one through five, the average end of year level, grade level equivalency was at or above grade level. These are the scale scores. The average end of year scale score is down slightly across grade levels when These are the scale scores. The average end-of-year scale score is down slightly across grade levels when compared with May of two thousand seventeen. Grades one through eight exceeded the on-grade level scale score cut mark. And in the following slides, you will see that the average scale score growth for this year as compared to last year was flat in most grade levels. And that while some grade levels saw slight drops or were flat, students started the year um lower and made similar or higher gains when compared to last year. So we'll look at the growth from last year and the growth of this year. The end-of-year first grade average scale score was two hundred and thirty, which exceeded the spring benchmark cut score of one hundred and five by one hundred and twenty-five points. All buildings exceeded the spring benchmark, and the average scale score grew one hundred and thirty-three points from beginning of the year to end of the year. The end-of-year second grade average scale score was three hundred and seventy-one, which exceeded the spring benchmark cut score of two hundred and seventy-nine. All buildings exceeded the spring benchmark, and the average scale score grew one hundred and forty-two points from beginning of year to end of year and exceeded last year's growth rate of one hundred and thirty-three points. The end-of-year third grade average scale score was four hundred and eighty-seven, which exceeded the spring benchmark cut score of three hundred and ninety-two. All buildings exceeded the spring benchmark, and the average scale score grew one hundred and nine points from beginning to end of the year. The end-of-year fourth grade scale score was six hundred and five, which exceeded the spring benchmark cut score of four hundred and seventy-nine. All buildings exceeded the benchmark, and the average score grew by one hundred and twenty-six points. In fifth grade, the average scale score was six hundred and eighty-seven, which exceeded the spring benchmark, and all buildings exceeded the spring benchmark. The average scale score grew one hundred and ten points and also exceeded last year's growth of one hundred and two points. In grades six through ten, the end-of-year scale score exceeded the spring benchmark for grades six, seven, and eight, and the beginning of year to end-of-year growth exceeded last year's growth in grades seven and eight. The STAR math test assesses students in the area of mathematics. All students in grades one through eight are assessed. The percentage of students meeting the benchmark at each grade level ranged from fifty-five to eighty-nine percent. The percentage of students meeting the benchmark district-wide was fairly flat when compared with May of seventeen. And as noted in ELA, these scores were renormed over the summer. And grades one through six, the average end-of-year grade level equivalency was at or above grade level. The average end-of-year scale score was flat across grade levels. Grades one through six exceeded on-grade level scale score cut mark, and the average scale score in seventh grade was one point below the on-grade level mark, and eighth grade was three points below. There was an increased focus on math this year, and as you will see in the following slides, in all assessed grade levels, the average scale score growth was higher in seventeen, eighteen than in sixteen, seventeen. In first grade, the end-of-year average scale score was four hundred and forty, which exceeded the spring benchmark of three hundred and fifty-seven. All buildings exceeded the spring benchmark, and the average scale score grew one hundred and thirty-seven points. In second grade, the average scale score was five hundred and thirty-four, which exceeded the spring benchmark cut score of four hundred and seventy-five. All buildings exceeded the spring benchmark, and the average scale score grew one hundred and nine points. In third grade, the average scale score was six hundred and thirty. This exceeded the benchmark cut score of five hundred and sixty-five. All buildings exceeded that spring benchmark, and the average scale score was, grew ninety-five points. In fourth grade, the average scale score was seven hundred and fifteen, which exceeded the spring benchmark cut score of six hundred and twenty-seven, with all buildings once again exceeding the spring benchmark and saw an average scale score growth of one hundred and nine points. In fifth grade, the average scale score was seven hundred and fifty-five, which exceeded the benchmark cut score of six hundred and eighty-three, with all buildings exceeding that spring benchmark and an average scale score growth of seventy-six points. And in grades six through eight, um all grade levels exceeded the amount of growth that they had seen in the prior school year. And sixth grade's average scale score of seven hundred and seventy-five exceeded the benchmark cut score of seven hundred and thirty-seven. There were a few areas of score increases and decreases, but overall, performance was flat when compared to the prior school year. This data will be utilized by building and district administrative teams, as well as by building steering teams to guide instructional planning and professional development for the eighteen, nineteen school year. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Uh PIC alternative program evaluation report, Mr. Whelan.
Uh thank you, Mr. President. Um first, I'd like to say there aren't too many alternative programs that I know of that get to share highlights on this stage. So I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Uh getting into uh the program, um a little bit about us. I know that everybody might not know uh everything that we have going on at PIC. Uh so I thought it'd be important just to share a little bit about our our day-to-day uh uh interactions. Um you, it's a unique learning environment. Uh students are there grades eight through twelve. Uh they may struggle in the tradi- traditional education setting, and because of that, we have many different benefits. I will say that this year, uh we brought on our eighth graders, uh and things for the most part went very well. Uh we did have a few of them that were in uh transitional situations, uh but those that were with us for the majority of the year uh did do a great job. Um the benefits to our program, smaller class sizes, uh one to ten teacher-student ratio, and my apologies that that uh that formatting's off there. Uh training in leadership and resiliency. Uh we still work with our Vista and our NCOA PIE partners uh for a lot of that aspect of things. Uh service learning opportunities. We partnered with Williams. Uh we continue our recycling program. Uh we also partner with Snack and a Pack. Uh community military partnerships and mentorships, again with the Non-Commissioned Officers Academy. E twenty-twenty online coursework, dot com teletherapy that helps a lot of our students get additional support that they may need in a counseling sense. Uh and then this year, uh we've added our alternative suspension program, uh and I'll talk a little bit more about that as we go through. Uh and then we also added our E twenty-twenty online summer school. A little bit about our enrollment. Uh throughout the course of the year, we've had forty-three students that have come through our door. Uh if you look at the enrollment chart there, that gives you a six-week by six-week basis of the amount of students that we had had. If you look at the first grading period, we started out with nineteen students. Um in the orange section there, that represents seventeen students that were in the alternative program. And then in the gray section, two that started out homebound. Uh to kind of put things in perspective, uh last year, I believe we started with fourteen students. Uh and next year, we're projected to start with thirty, uh so we are showing great growth in terms of that. Uh and then if you look at the end of the year there, eighteen students within the alternative program, uh six students who are on homebound, and then four within our ASP program or that alternative suspension program. Uh in terms of our student transitions, uh we had four students throughout the course of the year that transitioned back to the high school. And I think it's important to note that because uh obviously it's not a permanent setting or a permanent placement. Students do have the opportunity to transition back to the regular setting as well. Uh we had four students that transferred out of district. Uh we had three students that were recommended for ETC. Uh we had two students who were dropped due to attendance. Uh we had one student uh that transitioned to us from the middle school on a probationary status. Uh did a fantastic job, was able to get grades up, uh and transis- transitioned back to the middle school uh in order to be eligible for some extracurriculars there as well, uh and did a great job for the remainder of the year as we did check in on him. Uh and then we had one that uh that went into DYS custody also. Uh it's important to note, we did have two PIC graduates this year. Uh one student that came to us, graduated, started with us, uh got some online coursework done, and then uh eventually graduated through the Missouri Options Program. Uh the other young man that graduated was able to complete five E twenty-twenty courses within the course of the year and get his traditional credit as well, which was a a huge accomplishment on his end. A little bit more about our mission, uh which would be the the day-to-day aspect of things, kind of in in terms of a slogan as well. Right place, right time, right mind. Uh in terms of right place, we just want to make sure that the students are in an environment that will support their goals and promote their future success. Right time, that they're fulfilling a commitment that will do the same. And then right mind, that they're demonstrating an attitude that will do the same also. In terms of our vision, promoting growth through positive experience, uh that's kind of what the longevity of the program is is meant to do. A lot of the students that come to us haven't had the best educational experiences. Uh so once they get to us, uh the relationship building and making sure that we're just promoting growth through that is very, very important. In terms of our goals for this year, uh our academic goal, eighty percent of students will pass all core, or I'm sorry, that that should read, eighty percent of students will pass all courses and maintain a two-point-oh GPA. Uh we made that goal a little more challenging after last year. Last year was all core courses. Um so this year, uh we we made it more challenging in that sense. Our attendance goal, ninety percent of students will be present ninety percent of the time. Uh that has been a very challenging goal for us as well. Last year, we decided we'd make a secondary goal, um just so, you know, if we if we didn't meet that goal, we could still have something a little bit more realistic to shoot for, uh and that was with an eighty percent cumulative attendance rate. Uh and then behavior goal, eighty percent of students will receive one or fewer behavioral referrals, and we added the no OSS piece uh in there this year as well. So we'll start with our academic goal. Uh eighty percent of students will pass all courses. Again, my apologies, that should read all courses, and maintain a two-point-oh GPA. We did meet that goal this year. Uh there are two aspects I would like to point out. If you look at the third six-week grading period, as you'll notice there, uh we had ninety-two percent of students that had no Fs. Uh and that's tremendous in terms of making sure that they got the credit that they needed to get. Uh on top of that, we had eighty-five students who met both the no F policy, uh or goal, I should say, and the two-point-oh GPA. Uh as you can tell, as you look, you know, third grading period and sixth grading period, it is a bit of a stair step. Uh it it is challenging when we start school off and when we get back from uh from winter vacation, uh getting things back going again. Then you look at the six uh six-week grading period, eighty-eight percent of our students had no Fs. Uh and then you look at the end of the year, again, eighty-eight percent uh had no Fs, and then eighty-two percent ended with a two-point-oh GPA or higher. And that's combining the third uh six-week grading period and the sixth six-week grading period. Uh ninety-ninety attendance goal, uh again, ninety percent of students will be present ninety percent of the time. Uh as I'd mentioned, challenging goal for us. It was not met. Uh but I did do a comparative analysis from last year and this year, and you can see that we did make great improvement in terms of what our ninety-ninety goal was. Another important note, if you look at the uh six-week grading, uh sixth six-week grading period, uh we hit forty-eight percent, which is the highest we had ever been. Uh we instituted a an incentive plan uh that gave daily and weekly incentives uh to students who met that ninety-ninety goal. And then at the end of the year, it's at twenty-nine percent. Uh it's important to note, and I don't know if I said this yet, every six weeks, they start with a clean slate just so they can uh have that motivational piece in there as well. Uh so at the end of the year, that wraps up the whole entire year altogether. Uh and we did show a six percent gain there from uh from one year to the next. Our secondary attendance goal, we did meet that. Uh again, that was that we would maintain an eighty percent cumulative attendance rate. Uh and if you'll look, uh last year, we were at seventy-eight percent. Uh this year, we just met it at eighty point four percent. Uh in terms of our behavioral goal, uh eighty percent of students will receive one or fewer disciplinary referrals with no OSS. Uh unfortunately, we did not meet that goal, uh but one thing that stood out to me when looking at this data, if you look from the first six-week grading period to the sixth six-week grading period, it's on constant incline. It continues to go up. Uh and that shows that we have growth in that area, which was which was good to see. By the end of the year, and again, those reset each six weeks to give the students something to aim for. Uh at the end of the year, uh it declines to fifty-two percent there, uh simply because there are some students that may have received OSS prior in the year that weren't eligible at the end of the year. And then two things that are important to note there, we decreased the number of OSS days by forty-four percent from first to second semester. And then we decreased the number of referrals by thirty-six percent from first to second semester. Just to get an idea of where our students were in terms of their education, uh this year, we decided to institute six-week student surveys. Uh there were twenty-five questions on each of these surveys, um and it's very impressive to see. And I told the teachers, this is probably, in my eyes, one of our biggest accomplishments of the year. Uh in all twenty-five of those uh question areas, we showed improvement, which was great to see. Uh just goes back to the relationships that were established between the staff and the students. Uh on the final survey, a hundred percent of of PIC students agreed that in my school, teachers and staff want me to learn. In my school, staff encourages me to do my best. My teachers and principals provide me feedback about my academic progress. My school provides me with adequate resources and technology for learning. Uh and the district provides adequate transportation for me to get to school each day. Uh so again, just a great thing to see that a hundred percent of students agreed with those areas. Our most improved areas, um my teachers and principal listened to me. Uh at the end of the school year, on the last survey, seventy-seven percent of students agreed with that, and that was a fifty-two percent improvement or increase from the first six weeks. Uh my teachers and principal are supportive when I need them. Uh at the end of the school year, eighty-five percent agreed with that, and uh that was a forty-seven percent improvement. And then the work I'm given is academically challenging. Seventy-seven percent of students agreed with a forty-six percent improvement there. Uh our focus area for the year was respect. Um with with any alternative school, that's a challenge sometimes. Uh so we did go ahead and emphasize that throughout the year. Uh if you look at the very first one, in my school, students treat staff with respect. Uh forty-six percent agreed, which may not be the best uh in terms of final results. But if you look at that in terms of improvement, with a thirty-three percent improvement, uh that's great improvement for the year, and we'll take that. Uh in my school, staff treat students with respect. Seventy-seven percent agreed, uh with thirty-nine percent improvement. And then in my school, students treat others with respect. Sixty-two percent agreed with forty-three percent improvement. Uh we continued with our positive behavior support and our student recognition ceremonies. In terms of our student recognition ceremonies, we uh we went ahead and just uh recognized students every six weeks for meeting those goals. And as you can see, there are some criteria up there in terms of special awards that we give out, and I wanted to share a little bit more about that. Uh our right place award uh goes to the person with the highest attendance rate. Uh at the end of the year, this individual uh had transferred to PIC with a seventy percent attendance rate, uh and they had about forty days with us, and they had perfect attendance for those last forty days. Uh our right time award, uh we had a student that had five infractions first semester, uh received multiple days of OSS. By the second semest- semester, they only had one minor infraction and no OSS. Uh our right mind award, uh we had a student that ended with a three-point-seven GPA and completed six online courses. And then our pick-it-up award, uh the most improved student, uh we had a student that transferred to us at the end of the six, or I'm sorry, at the end of the semester, who had failed six out of seven courses, um and had a thirty-five percent attendance rate. Uh when this student transferred us in January, uh by the end of the year, they had a seventy percent attendance rate, passed all of their courses, and had a two-point-oh GPA. Uh in terms of our positive behavior support, uh we continue with daily and weekly attendance incentives, positive behavior referrals, and then we also do our tiger buck reward days. Uh leadership and service, uh we continue our leadership program. Uh students got fifty-two hours of additional leadership training, again, from Vista's and the Non-Commissioned Officers Academy. Uh in our service learning program, two-hundred-and-thirty-eight hours of service uh that went towards William Early Childhood Center, our Snack and a Pack program, and our recycling program. Uh one thing that I thought was very neat, uh and shows, uh you know, the resiliency within our students, they set a goal within the recycling program to collect a thousand pounds of recyclables. By the end of the year, they had over three thousand pounds. And then just some additional highlights, um that picture's uh very representative of the year to me. Uh we started putting up a certificate for each student that completed an online course, and our goal was to get the whole board covered. Uh and as you can see, by the end of the year, uh we're well off the board. Um so that's a, that's a very, very telling tale of how well the year went. We also instituted the alternative suspension program this year. ASP had five student participants for the school year. Three out of five maintained ninety percent attendance or above. Uh and ASP students had a cumulative attendance rate of eighty-eight percent. Uh and then in addition, in addition to the traditional credits earned, ASP students completed sixteen online courses. Uh and then E twenty-twenty, I know I had already discussed that. And then E twenty twenty, I know I had already discussed that, just to put it in comparison, last year, we had a total of twenty-six courses completed. This year, we had sixty, and as you can see there, it's in it's in a wide variety of of different subject areas. And then a few other things that I didn't get a chance to put up on the on the slide here. Summer School, we started summer school this year. It's a half-day, it's all online. We have eleven student participants. Our attendance rate to date has been eighty-nine percent, and seven of our students have perfect attendance to date also. So far, they've gotten eight additional online courses completed, and two students have already recovered all credits, so they're at home enjoying the rest of their summer. And then in terms of our enrollment projections for next year, as I said, thirty enrollees, twenty are alternative students, five homebound, and five in the ASP program. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Proposed job description revisions, first reading, Mrs. Bills.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following attached job descriptions are presented for your review as a first reading. Four point eight point one A, Executive Secretary Personnel slash Superintendent. Four point eight point nine, Administrative Secretary Operational Services. Four point nine point two, Student Service Specialist. Four point twelve point six, Information Systems Specialist. Four point twelve point eight, Curriculum and Instructional Technology Specialist. An administration request approval at the regular July meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Bills. Project Edge Tech or Tech Handbook, first reading, Dr. Atkins and Mr. Henson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Project Edge One-to-One Handbook is being presented for a first reading. It will be brought back in July for approval. If approved, this handbook will be utilized as part of the One-to-One Chromebook Initiative Pilot at the Sixth Grade Center that is scheduled to begin in January two thousand and nineteen, and this is the handbook that we've discussed previously. We've seen drafts of it during study session the past couple months.
Thank you. Board Policy, BBFA, first reading, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the policy that we must approve by September fifteenth of each year regarding conflict of interest, so it's on for first reading this month and will be then set for a July approval.
Thank you, Dr. Henry. Policy, JCB, Inter-District Transfers, Dr. Atkins, Mrs. Bills.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a first reading of Policy JCB of a revision to that policy, which is intra-district transfers. The changes reflect an update of the MCIP desirable standards so that they align with the DESI standards and also an update to the placement guidelines. This policy will be brought for a second reading in July.
Thank you. Move to Action Items, FY eighteen budget revision, Dr. Berger.
Thank you, Mr. President. This will be the more brief of two budget-related presentations. This one's just about less than a half dozen slides. So, this will be wrapping up FY eighteen. We're in calendar year seventeen eighteen, school year eighteen, and fiscal year eighteen. And kind of a snapshot of what our financial reporting timeline looks like, June thirtieth will close this year, and also July one will start the next fiscal year, and then our Annual Secretary of the Board Report, that deadline for that is the fifteenth. So, when we close this year, what we'll be doing is matching our numbers as the fiscal year closes, and then when we report it to DESI by August fifteenth, that will, those match, those, all those numbers will match up. September thirtieth is the close of the federal fiscal year with October first being the beginning of the fiscal year for the feds, and I'll bring that to your attention in an upcoming slide here because that that matters to all school districts a little, and it matters to just a couple of school districts in Missouri a lot. And then the final confirmation of any fiscal year is your your December thirty-one audit. So, our general ledger, when we close the year, is going to match our ASBR in August fifteenth, and then we'll probably have it before December thirty-first, but the third thing that needs to match up to all that, and whenever we know the books are officially officially closed, is actually December thirty-first. And keeping the December thirtieth, or excuse me, keeping the September thirtieth and October one times there, kind of brief on this budget revision highlights for the current fiscal year, and what I want to bring to your attention is this last sentence here, and this is all a little more detailed out in your budget revision letter, but the district received a payment of nine point five million dollars in the last month of the fiscal year preceding the budgeted, excuse me, exceeding the budget amount by one point nine million. Absent of this final payment for impact aid would have fell approximately seven million dollars short of projections. And the reason why I outline that is the importance of reserves, because our fiscal year in the state does not close with the feds, and they don't care about the state fiscal year. So, the last two or three years, I've reported before the close of the fiscal year that we were starting to get our spring payment for the feds a little later and a little later, and I verbally reported that to the board recently. It came in, and I mean, the same month that we would close. So, i-if that payment doesn't come in our, by the close of our fiscal year, we're going to run our our budget way short, and that it came, we actually ran that that line item two million dollars over. So, it just speaks to the importance of having an adequate number of, an adequate level of reserves, because as I, as I've indicated, the feds don't care whether we close the end of the year in June or September or whenever, so we've got to have an adequate amount of reserves in there for cash flow so we can still make payroll and everything else, all of our other fiscal obligations in any given fiscal year. When I rehearsed that like five times earlier, it was a lot smoother than what it just came out, so, but, any questions on that for clarity, please give me a holler. Budget revision highlights, Fund One expenditures will be screened for Fund Four applicability, and you remember that helps us with our B two eligibility. It's becoming more important, more and more important for us to monitor our per pupil expenditure and make sure that stays below state or national average. Right now, currently, you know, last few years, we've been staying right at about state average, and we probably have about a twenty, twenty-five percent growth ceiling to get to national average. So, we're in good shape, but it's something we want to monitor. We don't want to be be pinned up against the wall on on that on any given year. And the motion being requested enact revenue and expenditures to actual year-end account totals and necessary transfers to close the current fiscal year, please.
Do I have a motion on A?
I'll make that motion.
Second, Mr. Riley makes the second. All in favor, show hands. Five oh. B, project, or yeah, Project Edge and One Point One Pilot Initiative, Dr. Atkins and Mr. Henson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Over the past several months, information has been presented during study session on the transition to having student devices available at a ratio of one device per student through a combination of classroom carts and devices assigned to individual students that could be taken home nightly. A three-year deployment schedule has been outlined. Under the rollout plan, elementary students would have devices that are kept at school in classroom carts. Students in grades six through twelve would have devices assigned to them, and the devices would be transported to and from school daily. A provision has been created for students whose parent or guardian does not want them to bring devices home, so that the student would have access to the device during the day with a checkout check-in procedure to secure the device at school overnight. And Board Docs is a copy of one of the PowerPoints that has been previously presented for your reference. Administration requests a motion for approval of Project Edge and the One-to-One Pilot Initiative as presented.
Any comments, questions? Do I have a motion? Dr. Farmer makes a motion, I have second. Ms. Quinn, seconds. All in favor, show hands. Six oh. C, Budget Proposal, Dr. Berger.
Okay, Mr. President, Act Two here, and I will not talk any fiscal years, federal or state. This will, this will flow a little bit better, I hope, even though there are more slides. Dr. Henry has a copy of our budget there. I kept mine in study session. It's about a hundred, hundred and twenty-page book, and, you know, can look pretty daunting, but really, when you start breaking that down by department to site code, you know, we can get through it, so please, any questions that you have, tonight, I'll be glad to field them, but make an appointment, come by the office, and that's online, that'll be online on the Business Office Web Tab by the end of the week, and hard copies for any patron that might want it, if you would rather look at it that way, so. We'll start, every year, we start, I try to start right up a fiscal budget that is very conservative in nature, but we do have to, you know, kind of have our eye on, and that that slide kind of got messed up in the transition over, apologize, but look at some budget unknowns or concerns. And really, even with the the most pessimistic view that that one might have, and I've been probably accused of that lots of times, really, this year looks pretty good. Just talking about FY nineteen, looks pretty, pretty optimistic. A few things to note, though, just every year, this isn't exceptional this year, but assessed values are reported in June and July, so assessed values for our school district, and that's going to be a primary revenue driver for local revenues for our district, but the equalization, the Board of Equalization for the county does not even meet until July and will set the tax rates in August. So, we're, our budget is just that. There's a lot of, you know, you're estimating and and doing some guesstimating in some cases and trying to pull it all together, but local revenues, we aren't much of a challenge for our district. Assessed values have been very stable. Enrollment trends are good news, I'll touch on that in a in an upcoming slide. One of the the things that is good and bad is FY eighteen state revenues came in at the hundred and fifty million dollar growth. That's at the state level, and that triggers another round of tax cuts at Senate Bill five oh nine. I'm glad there are triggers in our state budget, but those those implications of Senate Bill five oh nine, we will see. Those will be phased in over every, for four, three more times after FY nineteen, every time the state hits that mark. So, that's something to kind of keep our eye on. Prop C is a statewide sales tax. Sales tax can can show a little volatility, so it's always a concern of mine, and we'll get to these enrollment trends. Oops, we'll look at the projected ASBR first, though. So, if I was looking at this at a district I didn't even know anything about, I'd have the the Operations Fund over here that contains the Teachers and Incidental Fund and the Capital Outlay Fund. We do not have a Debt Service Fund. All these funds right here fall in the incidental fund, so we've graded them out because they're all over here. And the first thing I'd go to look at, I'd say, is this district going to be black or red? And as you can see here, estimated receipts, seventy-four million dollars, estimated expenditures, seventy-seven million. This district is going to run in the red. We are projected to run in the red next year. The very next question I would want to ask is, is that one-time spending or is it recurring? So, I would go over here into operations, and I would add up the receipts, and then I would go to expenditures, and I would add up the expenditures, and I would see if that is black or red, because I want to know if this district is going to be deficit spending or projected to in the future. But here's a little trick, or here's another key, too. If the beginning of the year, the balance is fifteen million, six hundred thousand, fifteen point six in reserves, and they're going to end at fifteen point six, that means that district is not running into the red in at least operations. That's a really good sign. Don't want, it can happen, we may do that sometime, but that certainly throws up a flag. So, where is that red? That red is over here in Capital Outlay. Six million dollars estimated in receipts and nine million dollars estimated in expenditures. That's a three million dollars into the red, and I think the board's fully aware, that's Waynesville Middle School, the rap of Phase Two. So, that's a thirty thousand foot view, that's a summary, that's what your ASBR summary page looks like, and it's a good place to start, just to kind of get a little bit of a view of what the, what we're projecting the end to to look like, the end of FY nineteen. Oops. So, our enrollment trend, this is probably one of the better pieces of good news, and that is dictated here or indicated by this, it's a maroon line. While it's not the highest line up here, that represents two thousand and fourteen, and actually, fiscal year thirteen was actually even a little higher than that. We went through some years where we, our enrollment was declining, but we kind of stabilized right here, at about the fifty-seven, fifty-eight, a hundred student population, and that's a really, really good sign for both state and, well, actually, local state and federal revenues, but certainly more so in the state and federal. Revenues, kind of a snapshot, just a couple things, I'm not going to read this whole slide to you, but locally, we're expecting just current taxes, fifty-one eleven, to increase by two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. State, we're expecting an increase in in basic formula, four hundred and eight thousand dollars, and federal revenues, it really doesn't matter what's going on at the federal level, we're going to budget very, very conservatively at the federal level for our impact aid revenues. Kind of revenues continued, that's a nice graphic that shows where our funds come from. We are certainly get more federal revenue than most of the districts in the state, but we are very much reliant on state revenues at forty-five percent. Property tax, our local patrons make up a very, very small amount of our revenue mix. Federal revenue, oh, man, that's going to cut, those slides back with that back, white back, didn't catch that, I apologize, but we typically, the black is going to be impact aid, we're going to budget right about around fifteen million dollars, and what you're going to see on every one of these comparison slides is FY eighteen is closing, so those are still budgeted numbers, FY nineteen is closed, and all the ones preceding are actuals. So, typically, we do a little bit, well, we do quite a bit better in federal revenues than what I budget. So, it's kind of that philosophy of we're going to budget very conservatively for our federal revenues. And that's pretty much the theme for state, too. Always try to at least build the budget at the lowest level of projections we can do, and sometimes I have to tick those up, but as you can see there, we're we're projecting a little bit of increase in state revenue and a nice increase on the basic formula. The adequacy target, that's the revenue number, that's the number that drives revenue, the state has popped that up, and it's, the forecast is pretty optimistic for state revenues. Transportation, which I've had a slide for for probably the last two or three years, is not going to full funding, but it actually did a positive and and went up a little bit, too. County revenues just don't make up very much of our revenue mix, less than a million dollars. You can see the actuals and what I've budgeted for eighteen and nineteen. Local revenues, this is the current tax here, this is fifty-one eleven, that's the two ninety-five tax rate. You can see it's estimated to be a little increase there, and overall, again, nice thing to be saying this year, got a little tick up in virtually all revenues. Other revenue can be many things, but for the most part, you know, Pine Ridge tuition, area schools paying into the vocation, this little tick up will be the Spec House that we hope to put on the market soon. I don't remember what the number I put in there, but that bumped it up a little bit more for FY nineteen, at about what we were projecting it to be market value. Breakdown of revenue by fund, you can see here in the operations, that's where the majority of all our money is placed, and impact aid B two at about the five million dollar level is going to go into Fund Four Capital Outlay. We budget five million, fairly optimist, fairly optimistic that we'll receive more than that. Budget highlights, one thing to point out here, and I won't go into the weeds of it too much, but in your budget letter, you'll see this further outlined, but the big, big expenditure highlight was this increase to our personnel. I'll also have a slide pulling that up. Capital projects, we're estimating about nine million dollars in in Fund Four. Three million of that will be Waynesville Middle School, but other big-ticket items, diesel program, our twelve and sixteen leases, building communications was built in there that surfaced from safety, I think, got five hundred thousand dollars in there built in to start that initiative. Kind of go back and and kind of ride this horse as long as I can, but it was a really good Proposition One and passed it at a very positive seventy-one percent approval rate, but the important message is follow through on what we said we would do, and so that that Proposition One, that twenty cents was going to generate about six hundred thousand dollars. Our people said, and this was the draft expenditure, that's the same slide we showed when we promoted Proposition One, we want to spend it in the safety, we want to spend it in technology, we said we'll do that. That's what we estimated, we we said all along, that'll move a little bit one way or the other any given year, but six hundred thousand dollars is going to be committed to that, and so for safety, the supplement is two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for the things that we took on last year, looking at priorities for next year. For FY nineteen, three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Probably the big, the biggest thing we're hearing a lot about was just mentioned, the Chromebook Initiative. And and certainly, please keep in mind that even after our tax rate increase up to two ninety-five, ninety-three percent of the districts in the state still have a higher tax rate than us. Our folks get a bargain, said that out time and time again. Big-ticket item on the expenditure, this is the same slide the board, a lot of these slides we see in earlier months as they build up to the budget, but we, this additional cost provided eligible employees a step on the salary schedule was about six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Benefit increase was just less than a half a million dollars, and so this is what the committee came to to impact the places where we fell below what we felt like was market value in an effort to recruit and retain teachers. That total cost was going to be about two million dollars. Where were we going to get the money? This is an updated slide of what I presented to the board. So, in the budget, we grew about two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in the main local revenue. in the main local revenue, revenue driver of current tax, four hundred and eight thousand dollars in the state primary revenue driver of basic formula, and we shifted our impact aid resources, but just our B S P dollars, not our B two dollars, our B S P, to the tune of about one point eight million dollars. And we eliminated the gap plan, we got staff input prior to doing that, at approximately two hundred thousand dollars to, to write that two million dollar check that would, would, would take care of the cost of, of all the additions to the salary schedule. Waynesville Middle School project update, and we'll have a, a much more thorough update in July retreat, and ask D H A to come in also do the regular board meeting. But total contract of eighteen million, F Y eighteen, we spent out about fifteen million dollars, that's after the bills are, are paid from tonight's board meeting, and we'll be on the hook left at about three million dollars. And we'll hope that what Dawn forecasted during his last report, we do just a little bit better than that. So things are still looking good, there's nothing negative to report. I do have a progress meeting tomorrow, Wednesday morning. So hopefully, no new bad news. Along with that, built into this budget, already built in, is Waynesville Middle School, what I termed Waynesville Middle School rap. And so that, it was a draft budget, it's in there. We may have to change where those line items are, but it's in there at a hunk of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And as we start opening that building, we'll see what our needs are and try to meet those needs. May I have to come to the board for a little more on that? Not certain. I, I really think with what we put out in F Y eighteen, that's six hundred and fifty thousand dollars is going to catch it, but I'll keep the board updated. This is another thing that was in the works, and you've heard a little bit of even this year, but certainly has been a focus. We've taken, in a fairly short time, a one point three million dollar deficit, then to nine twenty, to a couple hundred thousand dollars. So that was a five thirty-one, so two hundred thousand dollars running that in the red. So food service trend is certainly trending in the right direction, so that's good news. I would almost say that, that will end better than that, but that hundred and seventy-eight thousand looks great right now, and we'll try, try to get that, the goal is to get black. Employee salary and benefits, that's going to move the mark, if you took the, the salary and benefits, going to move the mark about two million dollars if you did the math to that. This is the one time I told you we did a projection here as opposed to the budgeted, that number is our projection of how we, we anticipate the year to end. And then, of course, that is the true F Y nineteen budget numbers. Incidental expenditure, relatively static from previous year, at about approaching thirteen million dollars. Breaking down of the operating expense, this is always a good stat to kind of keep it quickly, to quickly pull out, but eighty percent of our expenditure is salaries and benefits. And that's not different than other school districts. It's always going to be that, it does surprise something. So once we plug that in, which is quite a task for over a thousand employees, thousand employees when you can sit, when you count part-time employees, when you plug all that in, but really, eighty percent of the budget is done. Capital expenditure, this one, you know, at just first glance, when we put it in the slide, looking at that and thinking, okay, couldn't figure this one out, I thought, okay, I can't, oh, it was, it was really a culmination of several things. It was Waynesville Middle School start, it was transportation, it was a big blacktop project we had. But anyway, it increased that budget line that year to where it almost looked like a school build, because it was in part, but it was in part several smaller projects that didn't fully get completed in seventeen. Of course, this F Y eighteen, the reason why the, the capital expenditure is, is much higher, is Waynesville Middle School Phase One, drops back down to nine point seven to wrap up F Y nineteen. That's what's projected if there's no changes. Lease purchase agreements, we're on the hook for twenty sixteen, twenty twelve and twenty sixteen series bonds out to twenty twenty-nine. We'll have a big payment here in F Y twenty-two, we got to prepare for at about two point two, and then it'll go back down to that, about that one point five mark for the remainder of that. There will be early payment options there, we'll, we'll analyze those as we go and see if there's anything that makes sense. Transportation expenditure has been on the rise. Now, you know, we got one year in there where we've got an increase for some facility, but this is something that we're going to have to start kind of watching a little bit, and very good news that the state's going to chip in a little bit more for our allowable expenses, but, or excuse me, yeah, for our allowable expenses to be reimbursed. But it's trending a little, little more aggressively than what I feel comfortable with, so we'll take a little closer look on what we're doing this year. Total district expenditure, as of right now, we're estimating or projecting a seventy-seven million dollar budget. And again, that's the same slide as the first part, but that kind of puts it all together in operations and capital outlay. So there's that nine million dollar number you saw. And again, seventy-seven million dollar, three million dollar running in the debt, but in the, in capital projects, and that's where we feel most comfortable with it. And back to the budget development goals, maintain a competitive salary schedule. I think we did great work moving that forward. We have maintained a quality employee benefit package so we can keep and, and recruit the best people. Vision and, district vision and mission work occurred again just recently, and doing everything we can do to support that. Think we've done a great job of planning for both scenarios with, with student population decline and increase, and address current facility needs. F Y nineteen budget, I entertain any questions you might have.
Any comments or questions on that? Do I have a motion? All right, Butch, second. Dr. Farmer, all in favor? Six oh. District Professional Development Committee, new teachers mentor protege handbook, second reading, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. The mentor protege handbooks that are utilized as part of our D E S I approved new teacher program for first and second-year teachers are being presented as a second reading, and administration requests approval as presented.
Questions or comments on this? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Keeling makes a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Derry makes a second. All in favor, show hands. Six oh in favor. Food service price setting, Dr. Berger.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, the district recommends the breakfast and lunch prices remain at the current rates for the F Y nineteen school year.
Do I have a motion on that?
Oh, yep.
Mr. Keeling makes a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Riley makes a second. All in favor, show hands. Six oh. Two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, school board meeting schedule, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have the regular monthly meeting schedule for your review and approval this month. You'll notice on here, it's a, a pretty typical schedule with, with holidays and things. January is a second Monday meeting, February is a third Tuesday meeting, and then March twenty-fifth, the perfect storm occurs in the upcoming year. That has to be the fourth Monday because we have spring break, and we also have our annual NAFIS spring visit during that time period. So those are the, the three different ones there, but I would recommend approval of the upcoming meeting schedule, and we will, if, if the board so wishes, have our retreat schedules and things that we'll make and, and put on the schedule later.
Have a motion? Dr. Farmer makes a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Quinn makes a second. All in favor, show hands. Six oh. G, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, administrator salary step, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. As discussed during study session, with, with the moves that we made in the certificated schedule for the upcoming year to address our, our teachers that are masters and over and ten years plus down in the salary schedule, we needed to take a look at our, our formula that we use for administrator pay. So we ran comps and, and looked at various scenarios to, to afford a administrator salary step increase without going over for the administrators. So we recommend that we hold administrator steps where they are for this coming year, with the exception of a few positions that, that would not receive the raise without receiving the step. And that will put us in basically the same range of the average of, of the salary schedule for the teachers, for the administrators.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Keeling makes a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Derry makes a second. All in favor, show hands. Six oh. H, proposed job description revisions, Mrs. Bills.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following attached job description revisions are presented for second reading, two point twenty-two point five, cybersecurity specialist, two point twenty-two point seven, computer technician, technician systems analyst. Administration requests approval of the above-named job descriptions at this time, please.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Riley makes a motion. Do I have a second? Dr. Farmer makes a second. Show of hands in favor. Six oh. I, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, W C C adult handbook, waive first reading, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Attached is a proposed handbook for the W C C adult courses. Administration requests a motion to waive the first reading and approve as presented.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Mr. Riley, second. All in favor, show hands. Six oh. And proposed revision to the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, extra duties, extra duty salary schedule. I can hear Colton laughing at that. Mrs. Bills.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following proposed revisions to the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, extra duty salary schedule are presented for your review and consideration. The addition of a head boy swim coach at an annual stipend of two thousand dollars, in addition of a head girl swim coach with an annual stipend of two thousand dollars, and add a freshman mentor facilitator with an annual stipend of a thousand dollars. Administration is recommending approval of these adjustments at this time.
Comments or questions on that? Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Mr. Riley makes a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Derry makes a second. All in favor, show hands. Six oh. Closed session, closed record, closed record, closed vote is allowed by R S M O, six ten dash zero two one, Section Three, hiring, firing, discipline, and promotion of employees in Section Thirteen, Individual Personnel Records, Performance Ratings, motion. Do I have a motion to enter into closed session?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Keeling makes a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Quinn makes a second. Roll call, vote, please. Mr. Keeling.
Yes, Keeling, yes, Quinn.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. We're in closed session.